Call the meeting to order. This is the Village Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, October 3rd, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. Residents and visitors are always welcome at all of our meetings. You're welcome to speak at any time that you would like. You can speak during the public comment at the beginning of the meeting. Or if you would rather wait to address a particular agenda item, you're welcome to do that as well. I just asked you to be recognized by me that you make your comments from the podium so that folks at home can hear and see you. With that, I ask you to please call the roll.
President Salles.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Trustee Hamilton.
Here.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Trustee Foley.
Here.
Village Manager Salarro.
Here.
Village Attorney Molina.
Here.
Village Attorney Mars.
Here.
Also President Village Clerk Kathy Haley, absenting trustee Sussman.
Thank you very much. We do have a floor. Would you please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I apologize right off. I think like a lot of other people in the village, I'm getting over a cold, so I'll see if my voice makes it through tonight. First up is public comment. Anyone like to address the board?
Alex Gallegos, 3234 South Harlem. Good evening, Mr. President, trustees, those in attendance, and to those watching at homes. Sir, I come before you and the village board on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the chamber, we should publicly thank all those who attended the very successful car show we had last Sunday. We had over 257 cars registered, but we do believe that onsite there was over 320 cars, not all cars registered. Weather was beautiful, and we want to thank Scott over at 2242 for having, again, a wonderful tent for the vendors. We also wish to publicly thank the Riverside Swim Club, who on a temporary basis has loaned the planters that are normally on site of the pool. Members would most likely recognize these planters during the season, made by volunteerism, and they are now on Quincy Street as a follow foliage begin, so that will beautify our central business district. And that's all I have for today, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate what the chamber did with regard to the car show, and a special thanks goes out to Rook Bell and Riverside Garage, who has been running our cruise nights in the car show, I believe, since 1995, and they've been doing a wonderful job, so we really appreciate it. It's become a regional event, lots of folks come to it and see our town. Mr. Butterman?
Hi, I'm Jerry Butterman. I live on Scottswood, and I'm here to just give you a very brief report on the clearing project that we undertook back in August. We made substantial progress, and I see Mr. Graham is here. He did a nice story in The Suburban Life, but I wanted to point out a couple of things tonight because it's sometimes when you see the view where the tree has been removed, it's kind of saddening because a tree has been removed. So I brought a couple of before and after comparisons. We promised to open up sightlines, and the guys did, I think, a phenomenal job. So this is only 60 seconds. We said we'd cut the weeds, remove the appropriate vegetation, we'd make the connection, and we'd open up sightlines.
You had a band there when you were doing it?
Yeah. They were by the river. So there's trustee Foley, Don Pagani, and Mike Welch. This is a before shot by Swan Pond. There's an after shot of the opened up view. This is looking east down the river. Then looking back west toward the Presbyterian Church, you can see the steeple, and now you can see the water. Here's looking across the river at the back of the library, and here it is with a little cleaner view. So the removal of the trees is always kind of jarring, and with the help of Mike Collins, he pointed out the willows that had been buried in the weeds. We also saved three elms because we thought that even if they're going to go later, the splash of dark green color against the library, we thought was appropriate to leave because we could cut them anytime. And there also, there is some stabilization of the riverbank, even though it's protected by concrete armament down at the base. So that's my report. Tom Lupfer, Mike Foley, Don Pagani, Jim Anderson, Mike Welch have been the mainstay of a dozen or more volunteers, and I think I'd certainly like to thank them because none of this could have happened without them.
Thank you, Mr. President. Every two weeks, it looks better and better.
It does.
Did I see you? Did you just pull that tree right up out of the ground?
Yes, I did.
Shh.
Super treasy.
Don't talk.
Super treasy.
Yes, sir, please.
Hi, I'm George Novak. I've lived in Riverside for over 50 years. My wife was born and raised here. She's 93. I'm 94, so I've been around here a long time. I read your article a couple of months ago, or weeks ago, about the changes you want to make to Burlington Street, updated, maybe bring some businesses in and all that. Well, I want to make reference now to what Oak Park did. Oak Park did that to Lake Street, their business district, from Harlem Avenue East. Well, they had a good business district. Marshall Fields was on the northeast corner, Wee Boats on the southwest corner, and Fair Store was down a short distance from Marshall Fields. Well, they made those changes, but, and it cost a lot of money, in 1989, they restored the street completely. At that time, Chicago did the same thing to State Street. They were going to improve it, bring in more business. They did the same thing that Oak Park did, but they didn't listen. The same thing happened there. They restored the street. I hope that what we do, because it's going to cost a lot of money, and even though you're going to get money someplace else, eventually that money comes from our pocket. Whenever you get money from the government or something, we pay for it. So I just want to remind you that this has been done before. They made big changes, didn't work. Then they had to go back. It cost a lot of money to go back again. I hope that we don't end up that way. And now Costco is going to open the 26th of November, just before Thanksgiving, it's going to open up. When they open up, they're going to affect a lot of businesses around here, but then one business that's going to get hurt are the gas stations, because Costco has the cheapest gas. All the gas stations are going to feel it. I hope that our businesses, the few that we have in town, aren't going to be affected, like our grocery store and whatever else we have here, because Costco is a big dealer, and they get thousands and thousands of people in there. How many of you people ever go to Costco? Nobody here? Well, wait till you see what happens over there. They're doing a beautiful job. The parking lot is almost finished now. They blacktopped it. It's going to be a big building. They're going to bring a lot of people to the area there. But also, it's going to affect certain businesses when they do that. I just hope that our board is aware of these things that are going on, because you've got a lot of young guys in here, don't even remember where Oak Park is probably. But they made those changes, and they didn't work. They reversed them. They went back. Chicago did the same thing. I hope we don't do that here.
Thank you, Mr. Novak.
Ben, I think, can you explain that we're not planning on closing the street?
Yes, we're not mowing the street.
Excuse me. Just a couple of things. That's a caution well taken, Mr. Novak. We are not, the contemplation now is not to create a pedestrian wall where traffic, vehicle traffic would be prohibited. If this does move forward, excuse me, we won't know until February about the grant, and if the grant is approved, there would be extensive public hearing and input with regard to the plan itself. So I can assure you that despite Mr. Molina's young age, we are aware of what's going on up here, and we're doing our best to make sure those kind of mistakes don't happen again. But we appreciate your comments very much. Thank you. Someone else?
I'm back. Nicholas Cariello, 354 Lionel Road, Riverside. Tonight I gave a memo of referring to Norgate property from 2008 to trustee Foley and Hamilton. I wanted to, I forgot to put some notations on it about the condition of the 20-foot alleys that are in back of Norgate Court buildings. I think that the village should take a good look at them, and if they're not going to improve them, at least clean them up. There's trees in there, a whole bunch of stuff in there that should be cleaned up. And maybe instead of creating more expense, think of vacating that property to the homeowners there and put their land on our tax rolls, because we're not, the village doesn't use that. It's a dead end to 26th Street, and they're just gravel, and they're loaded with, they've never been taken care of. Okay. Now I'll get to President Salles, trustees, Mr. Salarro, village manager, Ms. Haley, Mrs. Haley, our village clerk and legal counsel. Based on the last board's meeting, September 17th, and the October Riverside review, the village is now seemingly actively enforcing the village's municipal codes, zoning, building, parking, et cetera. At the last board meeting, I suggested that this board go forward and identify off-street parking spaces owed to the village center for commercial use purposes. Presently, the B2 commercial district on Burlington, existing businesses do not have to provide off-street parking, while new commercial development, the village center must provide off-street parking. Presently, the village center businesses are using on-street parking for their customers, taking away customer parking spaces for existing businesses' customers. It appears that this board has two choices, in my opinion. Require the village center to provide 17 off-street parking spaces as required by code, or honor the November 6th, 2006 ordinance, crediting and providing 17 off-street parking spaces to the village center development. I'll read the ordinance. Ordinance crediting parking spaces to village center. The Plan Commission authorized a reduction in the number of required parking spaces, conditioned upon payment of $5,000 per space, per required space, that the village center development was deficient. Payment of $85,000 of the 17 spaces was received. The ordinance proposes, proposed provides evidence of the payment and the permanent record of the exchange of cash for spaces. I would hope the board would start enforcing, if we're going to enforce our codes and people of the village has to adhere to it, I think the board and the village should adhere to I note on the agenda tonight, we have a sales tax district zoning, public hearing. At the September 5th board meeting, this board discussed it and referred it back to the Plan Commission at their next meeting. The Plan Commission is not, trustee Ballerine told me to go see the Plan Commission at the last board meeting. The Plan Commission had no meetings, August and September.
I can answer your question. Actually, you're going to take away my one only item from the village manager report. The public hearing for the Plan Commission to consider whether or not to implement the moratorium for the 90-day period is going to be heard on October 15th. Once the Plan Commission, if they agree, they will send a recommendation back to the board to go ahead and implement the 90-day period, and then at that time, the Plan Commission will begin addressing and considering the overlay district. So it wasn't on their agenda at the last meeting because the public hearing to consider whether or not to implement the moratorium has to take place first.
Well, my concern is, who ordered the public hearing? Doesn't the Plan Commission have to request a public hearing upon an application for it?
The Plan Commission, the notice for the public hearing has appeared, and we are going to be notifying all of the affected properties in that area tomorrow.
That I understand. That's not my concern.
No, but I can answer, no, the Plan, it's not necessary for the origination process to consider a public hearing for text amendments to begin with a request from the Plan Commission. It can begin here.
Who proposed the application for a public hearing?
This board.
This board. So was the application given to the village clerk, and the village clerk, according to our zoning code, gives the application to the Plan Commission to have a public hearing? Who orders the public hearing? Who's spending my tax money on a public hearing? Who's authorized to do it?
This board.
The board can go to a public hearing, bypass a Plan Commission public hearing. The board can order it. Is that what you're saying?
This board can direct the Plan Commission to hold a public hearing to consider a text amendment.
How can you direct?
But also, this is the--
How can you, excuse me, can I ask this?
Why don't you continue with your comment?
Here's what concerns me. How can you direct the Plan Commission to require a public hearing when they haven't met for two months? Let's use some common sense on that. I also want, I want to comment on this here village public hearing. At the last board meeting, I stated that the Plan Commission rezoned the whole B1 district into transitional district and made legal conforming district, completely legal non-conforming. Now, are we getting the cart before the horse on this here overlay? Don't you think for a public hearing, we should correct and make all that property conforming before we put an overlay zoning on it? You could put businesses there that retail, but since they're non-conforming, they can't park in front, their setbacks are back, they can't expand, they can't do anything. Why don't we use the public hearing to rezone it properly? Because it's 47 properties, 41 are non-conforming, including the residential district. Their setbacks are 28 feet, and they have to be 10. I mean, can't we clean up one district on Harlem Avenue where the most traffic is? That's one concern I have. And I would hope this board would have more common sense than the previous boards and just did what they want and made things non-conforming and hurt the business people, and it's not good for the village. That's about all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Cariello.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Just a quick other thank you. We were talking about the car show. We also, it just ended up a very successful farmer's market season this past Wednesday, and I know a lot of people were out and enjoyed it. And, you know, I was remiss, and Ms. Haley, maybe you could ask someone from the committee to come next time and kind of give us a recap of the season. That'd be great. That way, we could thank all the committee members who made it all happen. Thank you very much. Mr. Novak, did you have something else?
It's about the dam that was taken out. I used to come watch them work at it all the quarter. It was a thing to do at the time. And in order to take the dam out, they get their heavy equipment out there, they had a pile of the stone in the middle of the river so they could open, could get to the dam and knock it down. Well, what that did now, when the river is low, that stone is an island out there, and on the area of the dam that's away from the tower, the water there is like a cesspool. It can't get out of there because there's no traffic from the river coming down. Is there any recourse of making the Corps of Engineers take that stone out of there or spread it out or something so it's not an island there and causes that cesspool in the corner?
You know, it's funny you should say that. I was actually walking down there the other day, and I noticed that same area that you're talking about, the area that's very still.
Take a look at it.
Yeah. Yeah, we will look into that. That's a good point.
Because it's an island out there now, because the river's so low, all that rock and everything that was pushed in the middle, that was for the heavy equipment to get out there and knock that dam down. I think they should have taken it out. It creates the flow of the river on one side, but not on the other side now. And that stuff on the other side is just a cesspool. It catches a lot of crap in there now.
Actually, Mr. Novak, the Army Corps, at the completion of the removal of the portion of the dam, they did remove all of the rock that they used to get the heavy equipment out there. The rock that you see there, that's actually rock that has washed down, has come down the river. But what I can do is I will contact the Army Corps to see whether or not they can maybe come back and do some kind of pulling back of that stone to allow the water--
Are you saying that rock washed down from the river?
Yes.
I don't believe it, that it washed down. The rock didn't wash down and make that big island out there.
No, no. When the river--
They pushed that up there.
Okay. I will follow up with the Army Corps. But that rock did wash down from upstream. During heavy storms, the flow of that river, it is, it is a very strong river, and it carries a very heavy current that it does pick up many things. That's why it's not common after a heavy storm to see tree trunks hitting the Berry Point Bridge. Those are tree trunks that have come downstream from whatever they fell upstream. So that is just rock that has washed down. But we will contact the Army Corps to see whether or not there's anything they can do.
That rock was put there to get their equipment out there because the water was too deep to drive out there. They put the rock there--
But they--
--to get out there.
Okay. Thank you.
It should be removed.
We'll look into it, Mr. Novak. Anyone else? Thank you. Moving on, next is a report of village officers. I have nothing this evening. Mr. Salarro? You just gave yours.
I gave mine.
Anything else?
No, that's all I have.
Next up is the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone needs removed for discussion?
I apologize. At your places is revised for the executive session meeting minutes that are on the agenda for approval. Attorney Mars had made a, some suggested language change, so if all of the trustees are in agreement with that, I think a motion to accept as amended would need to occur.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Ms. Hamilton, second. Mr. Foley, please call the roll.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Motion carries. And I would just like to draw attention to, one thing that was on the consent agenda was, which was the minutes of the last, or the August 26th Parks and Recreation Board meeting. I was very gratified to see those minutes, and it's just an example of the extraordinary work our commissions are doing with regard to the charge that this board has given them with regard to the CMAP initiatives. We're asking a lot of our commissions right now and trying to move these initiatives forward. And as anyone who read those minutes can see, the Parks and Rec Commission, or the Parks and Rec Board are going to great lengths to accomplish their task, and we really appreciate that. There are no reports of departments or commissions. We have no ordinances or resolutions. Next up is consideration of the preliminary budget discussion.
Good evening. Before you, we have, before you this evening, we have both the projections for fiscal year 2013 and also the recommended budget for fiscal year 2014. For staff, fiscal year 2014 actually begins in May, when we start planning for the 10-year capital improvement plan, and then on top of that, the financial forecast. We presented the capital plan to the village board on July 18, and during that time, we discussed the present fund balance policy and funding for future capital. That discussion then continued into the August board meeting on August 1st. The village board committed to transferring funds necessary to pay for capital during fiscal year 2014. Additionally, we also discussed on August 15, the financial forecasts and the issues to consider. We discussed both-- We discussed both the tax levy for Parks and Recreation, the police pension levy and whether or not we wanted to tweak certain assumptions and increase the levy slightly for the police pension fund, whether or not the village wanted to pay off an outstanding liability for the IMR, IMRF. Also, whether or not we wanted to increase the IRMA deductible and whether the, the expenses charged to E911 and the parking lot should be adjusted by CPI. All of those items are inclusive within fiscal year 2014's budget line items. Right now, as provided to the village board, you have the line item detail along with some summary tables to provide you highlights of the fiscal year budget. Projected on the wall are the revenues as it relates to the various funds and the grand total and what those percentages represent for each respective fund of that total. With regard to the revenue comparison for the general fund, we both have the budgets, the projections for fiscal year 2013, and the recommended budget for 2014. I just ran the report as of actually this evening for September 30. And right now, as it relates to revenue, we're at 91% of our budget. And I also provided, just to illustrate, the comparison between the various fiscal years, also our projection, as it relates to revenue to show that we stay relatively flat as it relates to revenue. Items with revenue increase incrementally, but it's nothing substantial. The 2014 general fund revenue distribution, this provides a percentage as it relates to the various items, whether it falls under other revenue taxes, that's inclusive of property taxes, sales taxes, et cetera. And like I said, all that line item detail as it relates to those particular items are included in the packet. In the expense, I provided the distribution as it relates in totality to what's being budgeted for fiscal year 2014. So obviously, you can see that the general fund is the larger percentage of all the funds as it relates to expense. And then the expense distribution as a whole across all funds as it relates to personnel, contractual services, supplies, capital, and debt. And then this provides an illustration for the expense distribution across the general fund for the various departments. And then also, I provided a similar table within the packet. It was a little bit more detailed. This is more summary format showing you the 2013 budget for the various departments, what is now the recommended 2014 budget, any increase or decrease and the percentage change to those particular budgets. Also, just to recap on some projections, included in the projections for fiscal year 2013 is a substantial large claim that was recently settled that we had to pay out for. So that is inclusive in that. Also, like, as I had mentioned, the IRMA catch-up payment, we do have to budget for that particular expense or include it rather within our projection. So that is included in it as well. But despite all of that, we are still anticipating a surplus at the end of this fiscal year. And we're actually paying off prior year liabilities. With regard to fiscal year 2014, I view it as a very prudent and conservative budget. There is nothing to me that stands out, one thing or another. I've said previously at board meetings that I take a very conservative approach as it relates to revenue, hence us being at 91% and still having a quarter of the fiscal year remaining. I'd rather us be to the good at the end of a fiscal year versus us being in October and figuring out what do we now need to cut because we're not meeting our targets. And I will pretty much open it up to any questions that the board has. Those are basically the highlights of the budget in totality. We anticipate providing the board the actual budget document in the end of October to hopefully be accepted at the meeting in November. And then we'll also have the estimate of the tax levy. Items to follow will be both the budget and tax levy hearing and adoption of both the tax levy and the budget ordinance.
Could I ask you just for the sake of the folks at home?
Sure.
Could you just run through the bullet points under the 2014 budget that you gave on, on the, the history sheet?
Certainly. With regard to the police pension, we increased what the contribution would be for 2014 by 30,000, basically saying that we were going to reduce our rate of return assumption by a quarter of a percent. And speaking to our actuary, he said that that would mean an, an increase of levy by 30,000. So we've actually included that. The general fund, it's recommended actually by myself and the village manager that we can utilize, I, I, I understand that the board had previously said utilizing the surplus and transferring it over directly to the capital projects fund. But another resource would be because we basically need to utilize 18,000 either in unassigned for next fiscal year or utilize as an other financing source, the surplus that will be derived at the end of this fiscal year to fund next fiscal year operations. As it relates to the surplus, we are anticipating it to be 31,000. And as I said, that includes us doing the catch-up payment, IMRF, which is approximately The current IRMA amount, as it's budgeted, does not anticipate the village utilizing any of our excess surplus. And just to give the new board members some background, basically every year, IRMA evaluates whether or not they're basically retaining too much money of those within the pool. And if they are, it's distributed among those within the pool. The, the, how they factor it in is based on the actuary provides them the various numbers and the distribution based on size, based on contribution, claims, experience, et cetera. And so basically, the village has accumulated approximately 32,000 that remains with IRMA. We accumulate approximately 7% in interest, which is better than we can get anywhere else as it relates to interest. Last year, we utilized almost 55,000 to essentially balance our budget. This budget as presented does not utilize any of that excess surplus that's currently sitting at IRMA of that 32,000. If for some reason, the board decided perhaps in the first quarter or second quarter within the fiscal year, we do need those funds, we can then submit, IRMA allows now on a quarterly basis for you to submit a request to, to receive those funds and they will then transfer those funds over to the village. So that is another option that is available. If there is some discomfort also with us going to the $10,000 deductible, we have that available in case for some reason we need it. In case for some reason we hit three or four claims that hit that $10,000 deductible mark, then we have that available to us. Also included is the IRMA contribution. However, I want to caution you, we have not received yet what our contribution is going to be for 2014. So it's an estimate based on the first quarter of this calendar year from IRMA's actuary. They have to still decide at their administration and finance committee meeting what the final contributions are going to be, which aren't going to take place until later this month. So I will not have a number until, I'm hopeful that I'll have it by the next board meeting, but I may not have it till closer to the end of the month. So that is just an estimate. As always, I go on the higher side to be, be conservative, so that may be subject to decreasing slightly. It's based on also our claims experience. So because of that one large claim settlement, that might kick up what our contribution has to be for the upcoming fiscal year. So I just want to caution the board with regard to that. It's five years of claims experience in addition to what our revenue base is. And there's a calculation in which they factor all that in.
That's the first sizable claim we've had in some time?
With regard to the budget modifications, as was directed to the village manager regarding staffing and the budget allocation of personnel, that is also inclusive with regard to the budget. So for both the finance department, village manager's office, and also Parks and Rec, the distribution of the individual that will potentially be helping with the programming and other events under the village manager's office, there is a portion of that person's salary and benefits under now the manager, village manager's office. Inclusive in the budget is also changes within the village's health insurance plan design that is offered to employees. We made some changes for the upcoming fiscal years of cost containment measure through our cooperative so that we weren't going to see double-digit increases. We are able to curtail that. We're moving now from basically a $10 co-pay to a $20 co-pay. So some employees that heavily utilize the insurance coverage for the HMO portion will obviously feel a bit of an increase in their out-of-pocket expenses as it relates to health insurance. But we felt that we needed to start making that approach as it relates to health insurance because the cost is going up so substantially and there's no other way for us to curtail our costs besides making plan design changes and potentially passing on those costs to employees. Additionally, included in this budget is the merit pool for non-uni, non-union employees. And with regard to the revenue budget, it is only a 1.5% increase over fiscal year 2013 projections. Additionally, expenditures increase by 4.6% from fiscal year 23, from fiscal year 2013 to fiscal year 2014. And those are basically the highlights as it relates to fiscal year 2014 budget.
Excellent.
Excuse me. I'd just like to say how pleased I was to see that not only will we be able to include that large settlement payment, but I think it's really great that we are caught up on our IMRF payment. That puts us in the forefront of many Illinois communities and I am very, very pleased about that. So, and that we were able to do that and still have a small surplus in the budget. So, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Just following up on that, not only is it good policy, but just from the, the bottom line of this, we are paying almost $10,000 a year in interest--
Right.
--that we did not need to be paying.
Correct.
And we're not paying that anymore. So I've, I was really pleased to see that as well. This, this is really fine work, Ms. Francis.
Thank you.
And you should be, you're congratulating you and your department, Mr. Scolera and all the department heads that worked so hard on this. I mean, we, we will have an opportunity to go through some, some line-by-line discussions. Are there any general questions that anyone has of, of Ms. Francis before we look at some of the major things? No? Okay. Mr. Foley?
I have one question, Chris. The capital projects fund, we had budgeted for 2013 a million 474. And it looks like that we're at a million 258. The projected budget actually for, I, I just wondered what projects have pushed us so? Is it tree removal? Is it?
In the capital projects fund? The capital projects--
Where are you at, Mr. Foley, with your, with those notes?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm looking on, in my packet information.
Oh, on the, at the summary page.
And you're looking at 2014 or 2013?
So--
As it relates to capital projects, the expense actually has gone down significantly--
It's gone down, okay.
--from what was budgeted. And part of that's attributable to the, the train station--
The train, us now doing the roof on the train station and--
Yes, it was, we budgeted both in anticipation of the potential grant and also the expense because we have to budget them in, in both respects. However, in last year's budget, we had put the caveat that it was grant contingent. So if the grant wasn't awarded, we weren't going to move forward with that particular project.
Okay, so what I would suggest, since this is really our first run-through with regard to, to the 2014 budget, is if there are any particular items that trustees have questions about with regard to what's, what's been presented to us, that we could, we could seek information from our department heads who are here? So who would like to start?
Well, I, I, the IRMA deductible. We, I, I put a copy of this on everyone's table tonight. Changing the deductible from 2,500 to $10,000. We had a, we had a lengthy conversation when we discussed that. But, you know, the real, the real meat is if we go from, from 10 to 25,000. If you look at the average savings over, over the, from 2006 to 2010, you look at a 29,000 saving and a 10,000 with a 69,000 saving if we would have went to 25,000 deductible. And then it goes, goes down to 50,000 deductible, not very much. And then it goes up considerably, the savings, if we go to 100 and 250. But I'm, I'm, I know that none of us have the appetite to go that high. But I would like us to at least take another look at it and see if, instead of the 10,000 deductible, if the 25,000 deductible makes any sense. And from your experience, what, what would you think?
I've, I've had experience with deductibles all the way to 100,000. It's just usually you're going to have that $100,000 claim probably once every five years on average. I'd really have to take a look at Riverside's claims experience to get a, a good idea over the past 10 years and pull it from IRMA. Because basically, for example, the claim that we just paid, well, it was initially incurred, so to speak, in 2011. So all that claims experience is then going to be booked in that 2011 year. So you're going to see what we would have received as the difference, you're going to see that amount go down. Usually, when you have the optional deductible, you're not going to feel the impact of that deductible as you go higher. The $10,000 one, you'll probably feel all in one year. When you go to 25, you may hit it all in one year, most of the time it's going to straddle to fiscal years. Definitely with the 50 or the 100, if it's going to hit that point, it's going to hit it throughout multiple fiscal years. And so you just have to plan accordingly. If you know that you have open claims, which IRMA provides us a report of what our open claims are, you just plan accordingly for the upcoming fiscal year. I probably work for the only community in IRMA that is at the $100,000 deductible currently. Some are evaluating whether or not they want to move to the $100,000 deductible mark but are reluctant because they're uncertain of how do I budget for it? And I will be perfectly honest, there isn't a magic number for budgeting. You'll get your claims experience and you give it your best shot as it relates to budgeting, especially your first year. Because you don't know whether or not you're going to have that back injury workers comp that's going to take an officer off the street for a year. So you just have to plan accordingly across the board. That's why it's so nice to have that excess surplus available. And now communities that are looking to move to the higher deductible are actually keeping that excess surplus because they've decided, okay, we're going to go ahead with the higher deductible, but we have this money available in case we get hit with a claim where we actually achieve that, that total deductible, we can actually pull money out from IRMA on a quarterly basis.
It really does, yeah, I mean, it really does come down to what is the board comfortable at.
And I, my, my point is with the surplus that we have, I would feel comfortable with raising the deductible higher than the 10. I still think the 10 is very, very conservative. I think the 25 is conservative, but I know that y'all, you know, it was a push to get y'all to 10, so I don't want to push too hard. So I think, you know, 25 might be a comfortable level to, to start.
I was comfortable along with you, Joe, just so you know.
So given the information about the, the $32,000 we have in surplus that is accruing 7% interest, is there consensus of the board to go to the 25,000 deductible? I see one shake.
Before we do that, could I ask her, Ms. Francis, to come back with some information on what, what this would have meant in the past?
You want to see a 10-year, the 10-year losses?
Sure.
Can we get that for the next meeting? Then we'll, then we'll revisit this question then.
I would also ask, we provided a brief primer on what all these terms mean.
On what?
And what, what all the terms mean and what the deductible really, I mean, is it, is it $25,000 per claim or is that cumulative?
No, it's per claim.
Yeah.
So say we, we had a claim that, say someone got injured tomorrow, well, that claim, the start time would actually be at the $2,500 mark because it, it happened in 2013. So even if we don't pay the full 2,500 in 2013, whatever's remaining would then straddle into 2014. So it's per claim, but it can straddle multiple fiscal years depending on the timing, based on medical bills, whether or not the individual is entitled to any type of temporary disability payments, things of that sort.
I'm sorry, can you repeat? So could it be 25 in multiple years? So, could it be 25 in multiple years on one incident?
Yes. So, say the village of Riverside had 10 workers comp claims in...
No, say Joe gets hurt. Could we have to pay out 25 in multiple years on Joe?
No. No. Once you hit that $2,500, you're done.
Okay.
So, for example, say we have a claim this year for $2,500 and it straddles multiple fiscal years. Once you hit that 25, you're done.
Okay.
And we go next year to a $25,000 deductible and we have a claim that's not completed within that fiscal year, then, once we hit that cap in the following year, then we're done. So, it depends on the year in which the loss is incurred as to what the deductible is going to be for that particular claim.
So, we'll have to look at this next time when we have a little bit more historical data on our actual losses. Anything else on that particular topic? So, why don't we move first to the capital expense worksheet here? And are there any particular items here that trustees have questions about? I have a few, but I'd like to hear from you first.
What do you...I'm sorry.
The capital expense.
Page two.
Page two and three of the packet. I can just say...
Do you have a paper packet of that or just...
It was in your pocket.
I will just mention with regard to both the train station roof improvements and also the sidewalk replacement, that Director Bailey is going to be reporting to us at the next meeting on some alternatives that he's been looking into. So, we'll have more information that we can talk about.
Mr. Bailey is prepared to talk a little bit about those items if you'd like.
Does he have final numbers on them?
We...not complete. We'll come back.
Yeah, let's hear the whole thing when we actually have numbers to...did you want to go ahead and just give us a brief overview of what you've been looking at?
I think I can speak about the sidewalk for sure.
Okay. Why don't you come up and do that?
During previous meetings, there's been discussion about addressing the entire sidewalk system in the village of Riverside and really kind of aggressively pursue repair with the idea that maybe with over the next four years that we could get caught up with the sidewalk issues. I think one of the most expedient ways to pursue that is to hire a private sector company to inspect all of the sidewalks. Some other alternatives, I don't think we could get it done as quickly as we can with a private sector company. I have a proposal from Safe Step, the company that's been doing our saw cutting the last couple of years. And they also do sidewalk inspection typically as part of their projects. Sometimes it's combined with saw cutting and there's some other alternatives. We have 35 miles of street in the village. We don't know how many miles of sidewalk we have, but at many streets, we have sidewalks on both sides. So, the max sidewalk we could have is 70 miles worth, but it's probably something about 65 or 60 miles. We don't know. But, at any rate, Safe Step provided a proposal to inspect sidewalk for $61.50 per lineal foot.
Wow. What was that number?
$61.50 per lineal foot, per thousand lineal foot. Excuse me. Few of them.
I thought that was going to be a very short...
I was going to say, I'll take the sidewalks from Woodside up to the village.
So, that would work out to around $20,000. Even if it's 60 miles of sidewalk we have, it's probably $19,483 if we end up having 65 miles, it'd be $21,106. But, at any rate, it's $61.50 per 1,000 square feet, or 1,000 lineal feet. They would survey all village sidewalks, identify and report all trip hazards of one-half inch or more. Identify and report conditions of all sidewalk squares needing replacement. They provide a detailed report of addresses where reportable conditions exist and estimate cost for saw cutting and for removal and replacement of sidewalk squares. They did a sample section of 1,000 feet in the village. I don't...I think it was like Engage Street or one of these streets over towards the east. They found 87 reportable conditions. They were surprised at that high level. Again, it's a sample, but that's a real, kind of a real opportunity if the village board is interested in something like that. Again, there's other ways to do that.
Just from a latest data, we do have this one estimate now from Safe Step. This would be something that would have to go to public bid, yes?
Correct.
To get other companies...are there other companies out there that do this?
Potentially. You're right at the 20.
Well, that's just the inspection part though.
Oh, you mean the ultimate project? Yeah.
Well, this replacement and repair would be separate.
The inspection. Yeah, the inspection. I believe Safe Step is probably, I think, the only firm that I know of that does sidewalk inspections. I'm sure though, with contractors, you could contract for them to do a survey of the entire village. So, it is probably something that we would have to bid out. Well, the other thing you could do is you could always, with the understanding that it's going to be a group that you're going to be dealing with on a sort of professional level as opposed to just contracting, you could always get proposals with the understanding and the preparation that the board is comfortable waiving competitive bidding if it would be required. You know, so you still get the comparison that you'd have to get the supermajority vote to waive the legal requirement.
I mean, I'd be interested to know from Safe Step, they've done this sample inspection. I'd be curious to know what they would charge to fix those 87 conditions that they found to see if we could somehow try to extrapolate from that to give us some idea of what kind of repair cost we're looking at overall. And granted, we've just picked a particular street.
Right.
Do you think that's something that they could do?
I can find out.
Well, you had said their proposal though, if they did the inspection as proposed, would include those costs, correct?
No. What they would do, they would simply do an inspection of all the sidewalks in the village and report those conditions that need correction. We would then go out to bid for saw cutting or sidewalk removal and replacement, separate from the inspection.
Right. I thought you said they would provide an estimate. They actually do provide that service. One of the menu items was that they do enter into contracts with the municipality where they will go out and if they determine that a section needs to be replaced, they will either, depending on what we contract with them, saw cut it or remove the square. So, it is something that we could get a proposal from them to complete.
I'd be curious too if there's some kind of economiescale. I mean, is it...since they're doing the inspection, do they have a better rate with regard to repair or saw cutting than someone else who did not do the inspection might have?
And they do that, like the village manager just said, that's sometimes a service that they do offer to communities is, you know, they will have a project to saw cut and at the same time, they will be inventorying the sidewalks for others that have to be replaced. So, that is one of the menu items that they provide.
At a certain moment, what is the village's cost per square?
Well, most recently, the most recent bid, and I don't know that it really was that accurate as far as reflecting the true cost, but for 2013, our bid for sidewalk replacement was $7 per square foot. A typical sidewalk is 25 square feet, so that's approaching $200 per square foot for sidewalk square, per square.
Right. But, that contractor also came back and did tell us that he made a mistake on the bid.
Yeah.
And this year was replaced 70 square feet?
Yeah. We've been replacing like 170, about 170, the last few years.
Well, is it your impression that Safe Step is the best company to actually do the inspection part of this?
Well, I think they're very qualified. That's what they do is sidewalks. I attended the Public Works Annual Conference that was in Chicago earlier this year and actually met with several other...like we had, there's a regional representative that's based in Wisconsin that covers this area. And then I think it was the company president that was at the conference, he had a booth. And I was telling him about what we're hoping to achieve here in accelerated manner to get the sidewalks caught up. We have to get them inspected, so on and so forth. And they were very confident. They talked about in some other communities, they've actually used segues to facilitate sidewalk inspection. So, they have the experience to do it. I don't know, you know, there could be other companies out there that do sidewalk inspections as, you know, that's what they're designed to do or organized to do. But, you don't hear too much about that kind of a business that's usually like an engineering firm or something like that will do then. Or sometimes interns or sometime, a lot of times staff, but...
So, is it your recommendation that we should go ahead and do the initial survey to find out exactly where we are and then we can address whether we want to stay with this particular company?
Because when...
Just have another question.
Please.
I just want to clarify, I know this was asked before, but I'd just like clarification. I thought when you were presenting what they would do on their proposal, that one of the things that they would do, once they determined what was necessary as a result of their inspection, was that they would give us an engineer's estimate of what the projected cost would be for those. But, not...but, is that true or not?
That's one of the options that they listed here, estimated cost for saw cutting and removal and replacement.
I mean, typically if you have, if you have an engineering study done of something, it includes the costs, a projected cost.
But, is that option included in the total that you gave us that this...
Yes.
So, the $20,000 includes what trustee Hamilton is talking about?
Right.
Now, that's not the same as a bid.
Right.
That's just their estimate. But, at least if then if we went out for bid, we'd know...
We'd have a baseline.
What the baseline is.
Mr. Follett?
I have several questions. First, would the...is it Safe Step? Is that the name of the company? Would they enter that data into our GIS?
Sure. If we wanted, however we wanted to.
I think we'd absolutely want to.
Yeah. When we, when Public Works Director Bailey and I met with the Safe Step representative, that was one of the things that we did indicate to them that we would like whatever survey that they complete to be done in a format that then can be transferred into our GIS system so then we then have an inventory of all of our sidewalks.
And following up on that, I, the reason I think that's so important for many reasons, but one is I'm not viewing this as a project. I'm viewing this as a program that will go on in perpetuity. And that's why the GIS is so important because, I mean, 87 trip hazards in what?
1,000.
1,000 feet. This is something we're going to be doing every year forever. Because once you get through the first, then there's more. You know, once...and so, given that, I think it's, I mean, the idea of having Safe Step also, a combined contract really doesn't make a lot of sense to me because we're going to be going out to bid every year for this.
Right. Well, one of the things that we talked about is, once we know where all of the deficiencies are, then we can then come back to the board. And then the board can kind of give us the direction on whether you want to break the village up into four quadrants and we tackle each quadrant each year, or if you wanted to do it all at once, we would be able to tell you what the cost would be. And then it really then is up to the board to decide what approach to take.
Are they able to prioritize the repairs needed?
What we would base their inspection on is our insurance company's model sidewalk policy. That's Irma. And it lists, and I have a copy here, it was just recently revised by Irma and it's typically adopted by Public Works departments. But, there's five criteria, actually six criteria, but for the purposes of this project, I think we just use the five. And this states that anything that is a condition four or above would warrant replacement or correction, it could be a saw cutting issue. But, I'll just read the criteria for this. This is just condition number four. For cracking, it says severe structural defects, map cracking with no loose pieces, separation of up to one quarter to one-half inch. Joint deterioration, chipped or cracked, separation more than a quarter inch and up to one-half inch. Vertical displacement and settlement, more than a quarter inch, up to half an inch. Spalling, 35 to 50% of the surface chipped away. Side slope, one-half inch to one inch per foot with evidence of continuing slope accentuation such as maybe a tree would be causing it to continue to, as it grows, it would continue to cause additional side slope. And then condition five, which is more severe, would be, you know, larger cracks or whatever. I'll just run through those. Condition five, cracking, major cracks with chunks of loose concrete. Joint deterioration, major chips or cracks with separation more than half inch settlement. Spalling over 50% of surface chipped away and side slope over one inch per foot.
So, they could rate it by those conditions?
Yeah, they were given this policy to base their proposal.
So, I guess one thing we could do with regard to the budget discussion we're having is we could leave, right now we have $100,000 designated for the sidewalk replacement. We know we're looking at $20,000, $21,000 in terms of this overall study. We could go ahead and have that done, leave the $100,000 in place and then wait till we hear back what the actual report is and then we'll have a better idea of how to proceed on a...and I agree with exactly what you said, Mr. Follett. This is, you know, this has been neglected for a long time. This is just as important to me, I think, in some ways more important as our streets. We have to keep it up. It's just part of the natural maintenance of taking care of our village. So, does that sound like acceptable to the trustees?
I would just, would like to mention that trustee Follett, we, Mr. Bailey and I did consider the suggestion that you made at the last meeting on maybe getting CMAP to have an intern, but we felt that by the time we would go through the process of getting someone here, getting them really in tune with what we would be looking for, that the most economical and fastest way to address the issue is to bring in an outside firm to complete the work for us. So, that's why I just wanted to let you know that we did consider that, but we just felt because of past discussions here at the board level that this is a priority for the board and we really did not want to waste any time moving on that.
I appreciate what you're saying. I would, I don't know if you looked at, I know CMAP has done this and I wasn't involved directly myself, but perhaps it would be helpful for me to get you what they did for Burr Ridge.
Sure.
Because you're probably right, but we might as well be sure about that.
Okay.
So, I'll see what I could get for you.
And also, they're going to be looked at every year. So, if we could look at a program for the future too, you know, so that we're not hiring this firm to come in every couple of years.
Well, I'm thinking, what we were thinking is that if we have this inventory completed and it's already in our GIS system, it kind of done, then does become easier for ed and staff or future interns at the Public Works or seasonals at the Public Works Department to then kind of do follow-up inspections. And that's one of the ways that we're thinking about tackling this, so.
Well, again, we're not going to have to make this decision tonight. If you would get that information to the village manager, trustee Follett, then we'll... and thank you, Mr. Bailey, for this report. Appreciate that. So, anything else with regard to Public Works? I guess the only other thing that I had, and before you sit down, has to do with the resurfacing of parking lot number one. And as you know, the board had stipulated that as we move forward and we look at infrastructure projects, that we always want to consider a sustainable alternative. So, before we actually make a decision on this item, if we could have a report from you on a comparison between the actual resurfacing as it's shown here versus the long-term cost of a green parking lot?
Okay.
I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Then we can look at those numbers and make a better decision.
Okay.
Do you think, is that something that you could have for us by?
We actually have already put some numbers together. I think one of the things that we just as staff need to follow up on is what the maintenance costs will be because unfortunately, since the Burlington lot is the first permeable paver lot that we have, that is kind of going to be able to tally... paver lot that we have, that is kind of going to be able to tell us what our annual maintenance costs will be. So we don't have an exact number, but we're working on putting together what we think our annual maintenance costs will be. But Ms. Francis was able to put together a spreadsheet that kind of showed the cost of the two lots, and then we amortized both over the life of the different materials. A paved lot, we anticipate a lifespan of, I think we did 15 years, whereas a permeable paver lot has a, a normal lifespan of about 50 years. When you amortize that out, based on, on the year, the paved lot still comes out less than the permeable paver lot, not even putting in the maintenance costs, but we can come back with that. But at this point, it does seem as if the, the paving the lot is going to be cheaper in the long run than moving to a permeable paver lot, which will have larger upfront costs for the village, and, and I guess, and not have the type of return that we would anticipate. Fiscally, there are other advantages to going to the permeable paver lot, and that is that it would reduce the amount of water runoff, as well as it does show then the village's commitment to the, the green principles that the board, the previous boards have adopted in the village, so, but we can, we will finalize all of that, and you can have that ready for the next meeting.
I mean, we have time on the budget process to take our time with this, and if you wouldn't need, if you need until November to get these numbers.
Well, we-
Because I, I mean, I, I really want to see those numbers.
Sure.
I, I have to say, I kind of doubt that with regard to the fiscal side of it, and especially with regard to the surcharging of our sewer systems. I mean, I mean, I would like some kind of estimate with regard to how much water a paved lot dumps into our sewer system on a given rain event. And I think those costs, and the cost of people having water in their basements, that has to be considered as well.
Okay.
So, let's take a close look at this. This is something, there are, there are, our financing alternatives with regard to this, we do have a parking lot fund, one alternative would be that the general fund could loan money to the parking lot fund. So these are all things that, that I think we, we need to consider, not only with regard to this, this project, but with regard to all infrastructure projects moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Okay. Other items with regard to capital, does anyone have anything else?
Have we done, have we moved by the police or?
Yes, yeah, anything, anything with regard to capital?
The replacement lockers. It went down from 24,650, is that because of a difference in lockers? And what is the difference between the lockers and the floor?
Good evening, President, trustees. It, it, we did go back out, they came in with another bid, I believe it's in your packet. They are overall about, the total project would be about just under $12,000, it's less expensive. The flooring system would be like a crushed granite now, kind of like an epoxy. We originally got a grant, a bid for like a rubberized floor, which came from our insurance company, Irma, suggested that we get this rubberized floor that could prevent fall, it would be better for injuries. It was just a suggestion, so we went with that suggestion. This company that, that made the bid for the floor would be a crushed granite or an epoxy type, which was lower in price. So was the lockers. The Tiffin lockers that Lieutenant David Cruel did the research on, we suggested if the board so chose to go with it, came in just under 23,000. That includes everything, that includes installation, removing the lockers, and installing them. And it is a different locker than originally we came to the board with in the first time. It's a little smaller, it's a wardrobe locker where the seat folds up. So the bench that's in the locker room now would be removed, and the bench in where the officers would sit in front of their wardrobe locker, that seat would fold up into the locker. And then that locker has a section for wardrobe, a section for equipment on the bottom, and a second, a section for locking weapons or other valuables at the top. And there's, it, they're a little bit smaller than the original bid, but it's not lengthwise, it's more across, but we can still fit in the number of lockers that were requested, because we'd be taking out the bench, and they just fold up the seat, and the seat just goes into the locker, which means more floor space.
What's the, what's, if, what's the difference between the locker and the floor? Do you have to get them both, or do we have a bid for, if we just did the floor one here?
We do. If you just do the floor, the bid was 26, 2696, 2,900, 2,696. They can do the floor without putting the lockers in, they would bring the, they would just do the floor up to the existing lockers we have now. And that's in both the male and female locker room, and included just outside the shower area, but does not include the bathroom.
So that would take the carpet out and put this-
That would, that includes removal of the carpet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
The only thing the company told us is that they would, they would have no problem just putting the floor in, they're two separate companies, but if we someday go with new lockers, because the lockers we were suggesting now are a little bit shorter, then there would be a gap between the epoxy floor and where new lockers are put in in the future. Not that we couldn't call a company back in and maybe, you know, extend that floor to wherever the new lockers would be, if that would happen in the future. But they are separate, there are separate bids.
Okay.
And chief, the, the lockers, you feel confident in the materials and the way they lock and everything like that? I know I was concerned about the-
I did.
Weapons locking.
I did. The ones we have now are basically sheet metal, these are heavy duty gauged. The ones we have now are low grade lockers. Not that they weren't good, they are. The locking mechanisms do not work. We do not allow officers to put padlocks on their lock, because that limits me to have access to their locker for investigations, and if the need should arise for inspections and discipline. After consulting with our prior village attorney, he suggested that we do not allow officers to put their own locks on the lock. So we don't. We have master keys for those lockers. So these ones are, they're much better, they're, they're, they're similar to what you might see in a sport, sporting locker room, but they're not those big ones that you see the professional athletes in. We did go to two police departments to visit the current systems. One of them is very similar to our neighbor in the Village of Lyons, and they built their new facility, and we visited another agency and looked at the similar system.
And also in regards to the gun, separate gun compartment, because many of the officers carry off-duty weapons, as well as secondary weapons, they do leave those weapons in, or they will leave the weapons in this lock box. And we did consider a kind of community-type locker where you could put the guns, but the space in this area is very limited, and so we would not have anywhere really to put a separate locker. But also, when you have a shared locker where you're putting all of these weapons, then individuals have access to other people's weapons. And this area where the locker room is located is not a, it's not a secure area.
Right.
So the cleaning people have access to that area as to any other individuals that may be working in the police area. And because the locker room is a dressing area, we are not, we do not have any video surveillance cameras that we can watch what's going on in there, and so there would be that concern. And that is why with the existing lockers that many of the floors have rusted out, when Tom approached me, I, I did review this item with him, and, and the main reason why it is included in here is because I do, I personally do feel with Tom, agree with Tom, that this is an item that does need to be addressed. And we do anticipate getting at least 15 years' life out of, of these lockers that we're, we're proposing, so it's not like something that we will be coming back in five years to, to ask for replacement, so.
In their bid there, it has 15-year life, normal wear and tear, assuming that-
So I'd say consensus that they're not in the locker.
I think we have to do the floor and the locker, if you look at what we just did in the, in the fire department, in their day room, we put in a new floor, and then the new cabinetry was put on top of the floor, that's the common order of things, and-
So assuming that with regard to the lockers and the flooring, Mr. Pollak?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. I had a question about the web-based cameras.
Yes, sir.
The, I assume that the assumption is to only replace these as needed?
Well, it was to replace the, the system that we currently have. There is one, we do have to, as of January 1, 2014, all police departments will be under a new law on what we have to videotape. Basically, we'll have to videotape come January 1st, in our interview rooms and our booking rooms, every single felony arrest we make. That's not the case now. There's six requirements for videotaping and audiotaping under Illinois law now. So I wanted to update that camera, because we absolutely need to have top-notch evidence, because that evidence is going to the prosecutors and defense attorneys, and will be available for, you know, court purposes. But the current camera systems we have, my proposal was for that to be an IP-based or web-based system. So it was a proposal for replacing the current cameras. It's not that the current cameras are broke, it's just that several of them are in poor condition. The best ones we currently have are in the booking room and the, and the interview room. The poorest ones we have are in the common areas. So, but, you know, if you would like me to come back with a proposal to, you know, put something else together, we could, but the initial proposal there was for the entire system to be replaced. I will have to update the system for the interview room. It is not, it will not meet the criteria for the felony statutes that are coming out next year.
What do the trustees think? Shaking knees, replace all of them, do you think?
I think we have to stay up on the technology with that, especially if it's mandated by the state.
Yeah, the one, the two cameras aren't going to be mandated, those are the only ones that will be mandated, but I do have more cameras than that.
Is there a reason why it all has to be done at one time? I mean, if you're going with the IP system, does it, the other ones would not-
Well, we, it was going to be a, a web-based system, and we just thought it was more economical to get that done, and the, this company that gave us the bid currently is maintaining the system that we have, says it's cheaper to put in at once. They'll have to do, there'll have to be some cabling involved, and there'll have to be new cameras. They, the state law says we're going to have to have colored cameras. I don't have colored cameras right now in the police station. Now, that's for the interviews and for the court purposes, but we are just going to upgrade the entire system when we did the interview room.
So do we know the difference it would be to, to replace the whole system, or, and/or become compliant, is, is, I think what-
Yes, we could, I can, we could become compliant by state law with two improved cameras.
And that would be roughly what kind of-
Probably anywhere from $3,000 to $5,000, because we have to get, the recording system too has to go with that, the, the capacity for us to be able to produce those videos and those documents, and give them to the public defender's office and the state's attorney's office, and anybody else that's entitled to them in criminal cases.
I mean, I certainly understand the need to be compliant, I guess I, I'm hesitant to replace cameras that are still working, is my personal view.
Yeah, I, I, there are no cameras that are outright broke. There are cameras that are much more low quality, they're black and whites.
Are they serviceable for the purposes for which they're used?
I would say that some of them are, I can tell you the one in the police lobby is not, I don't believe, and the one in the, outside the police station, that also monitors the stairs that go up to the paramedic quarters, I believe needs to be improved, and I think that was proved last year in a case we had. The one in the lobby is important to me, because people come in to, to file complaints, and there are times when people don't like the service that they may have gotten from our dispatchers. I use that, that, that video camera to review. And we can't audiotape that lobby as long as we put a sign up there that notifies the public that you're being, you know, that you're being taped. So if citizens say that my dispatchers or a sergeant came out to the lobby and treated me rudely, I can easily go look at the videotape and, and just be able to start my investigation from there.
And right now you can't, because it's not audio, correct?
That's correct.
And the camera that, that Chief White soul mentions for the back area, that also picks up any traffic going up into the paramedic quarters, that is the door that the police oftentimes bring in individuals that they have arrested. So that is probably, even though we're not required to have the, the quality video, it is important, because as Tom indicated, he was requested for a copy of that video in, in relation to a case. So it is one of the other cameras that, although is functional at the moment, would probably go a long way in helping-
See, and that goes to the cameras even in our booking room and our, our cells. The cell cameras are really liability. They are currently in there, and they block out the toilet by state law, you, we can't film anybody who wants to go to the bathroom. And it's designed that way, it has a blackout there, but our dispatchers have that on in the radio room, and it's audiotaped and videotaped, that's allowed by law, so that we can keep those in case, you know, somebody was to try to harm themselves or try to commit suicide. And the booking room tapes are used, because it's many times officers are in booking prisoners in the middle of the night on their own, and we will only have two or three officers, and if a fight breaks out in our booking room, the only way that the dispatcher could know that the officer is in a struggle with an offender is to watch the video camera and then call in the police officers from the road to come and assist them, because it, it's common that officers are booking prisoners by themselves. It's just, we just don't have that many officers to be doing it all at once.
Okay, so-
So the $35,000 basically takes care of all of this stuff, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
The new outside camera, the new camera with audio inside the thing, the new cameras?
That's correct.
Everything gets upgraded?
Yes, including the state mandated cameras.
1080p, it's as clear as a bell.
Yes, no, it's, it's, it is.
Okay, so I, I sense a consensus for deciding, okay. And then the last thing that I have with regard to capital, chief, is if, are the vehicles. The, the three requested vehicles, the two patrol and the detective squad, have, has, has our mechanic, the village mechanic, had, they actually said that these need to be replaced? Are these on here just because they're on some kind of abstract rotation?
Well, they're, I've never had them reviewed, reviewed by our in-house mechanic, that's never been the policy.
Talking about Riverside.
Yeah, it is, Riverside Garage. Well, we use their, we use their maintenance records, and, you know, I know that there's a proposal for our own maintenance thing, but we use their records, and we use, you know, the mileage and idle time. For example, I looked at the, the two marked cars I wanted, I proposed to replace, they're an '09 and a 2010. The current, the one has 64,979 miles when I came to the board meeting tonight. The other one has 58,407 as I came to the board meeting tonight. We're probably going to put another 10,000 to 11,000 miles on, based on, according to the records, we're putting on about 48 miles per squad car per day, take it on an average. So the squads that we bought last year, in the, in the board approved, didn't arrive till June. The bids for all the squads, for the state bids, aren't out yet, so I couldn't tell you exactly what make, model, and what the price is for the fleet vehicles. I probably will by the end of next week, I suspect the state will release all the state bids for the squad cars. But I went to the, the manufacturer recommends that you go to the Society of American Engineers, Ford does, and you use the formula for the idle time. So I went to the squad cars, and I took it to Riverside Garage, and we had them hook the cars up this morning to the idle time. And the 2009 car has 2,863 hours in idle time, and the 2010 has 3,269 hours in idle time. If you use the formula by the Society of American Automobile Engineers, that's 129,000 miles on the '09, and 146,000 miles on the 2010. And the reason there's more in the 2010 is because it's just, it's, has been used more in the, in the rotation. So those aren't actual miles, I want to make that clear to the board, that, that's the formula with the miles and the idle time, so. And the squad cars are the officer's office, I mean, they're in them 24 hours a day, and these squad cars nowadays, unless the officer has to come into the station to make a physical arrest, there's no reason for them to come in on our, they can write their reports in the squad car. They can do everything in the squad car from those computers in-
But chief, I, I understand, but I guess my question is, I appreciate projections and formulas, but what kind of condition are the cars in? Are they mechanically sound, are they clean, are they usable? Do they have life left in them, or do they need to be replaced now?
They have, the, only 50- They have, the, only 57 had an auto accident in 2013. We're still having problems with that car. The, they're, they're, they're not like, the car isn't going to fall apart, it's not a bucket of bolts or it's not going to work. But I always take into consideration when I come to the manager and the finance director is projections when they also ask me to look at the trade-in value. Ford told us that, from my perspective, they said over 80,000 miles, we can expect to get very little for the fleet cars. You might get more if you're trading in your own car, but the fleet car, they're not going to give us more for the trade-in. And if you remember last year, we came in under the budget because we got high trade-in value. So yes, we, the cars, they have some mechanical problems. There are mechanical problems that are fixed by Riverside Garage. Cars are off for a few days. We haven't had any major engine blows. We've had just body damage from the squad car accidents, but, you know, I don't, we're approaching that, but by, if we wait a year, we'll be excess of 80,000 miles on, well, the detective car is already over 80,000, but the patrol vehicles will be in excess of 80, far, far in excess. So when we buy, when we purchase a new car, we'll pay the purchase price. There won't be a $6,000 or $8,000 trade-in. That's the one trade-off that when I made my presentation to the manager and the finance directors, I take that into consideration. Doesn't have to be, but we, we could pay full price when we go, you know, to, to, or 2015 or 2016.
How many patrol cars do we have total?
We have nine total cars. We're not all marked. We have three unmarked cars.
And these are the oldest, these are the two oldest?
Yes. And the, the ones with the, currently with the most mileage. And these vehicles are, yeah, they're the ones with the most mileage and the most, well, actually the one with the most miles is the detective car and the oldest, but for the patrol vehicles, those are the two oldest and the two with the most miles.
And on top of the 68,000 was the change, the changeover cost?
It's included. At the finance director's direction, she wanted the full cost of the squad cars included last year, including the changeovers, and that, that is included in that price.
And the trade-in value is not deducted from this price?
It is not because we don't know what they're going to give us for the trade-in value.
Other questions?
Does it make any sense to use one of the patrol vehicles that rotated down to a squad since it has, say, the 66,000 mile one because you said that the detective squad has 80?
Yeah, well, because we could do one of two things. We could, we, actually several, we could, in the past, we've rolled the chief's car down to the detective. My car's, you know, like 30,000 miles on it. Typically, the detective car lasts five to seven years because it's not used on patrol. So if it gets the car with 30,000 miles, it could easily last another five to seven. As you may recall, the deputy chief has a car that's assigned to him. That is an old, old patrol vehicle. I didn't even include in this because his car is, you know, he lives in Brookfield and he doesn't really use it that much and he goes out on patrol, but there's a car available for him for administrative purposes. That car probably has 94,000 miles, but I just didn't even include that. So that might be the car that you take a vehicle, a squad, and roll it down to, but then we're not going to get any trade-in because that, the car that the deputy chief uses is of extremely poor condition. But it's not used for patrol, so it's not used on the same, it's not even used as much as a detective vehicle is used. So it, it, it's not something I could come to the board with and ask for a trade-in now because it's, it's still utilized.
How much, how much mileage does the detective squad get a year about?
If, his car currently has 86,000 miles on it and according to the 99 sheets, which are the sheets where the officers put their mileage, the detective car can range anywhere from 31 miles a day into the hundreds because he goes out of town way more than the officers do. So it's not uncommon for the detective car to be traveling throughout the suburbs following up on cases. So there's sometimes he's written in his mileage over 200 miles a day. Now, that might take him out to, you know, Elgin and other places where they're doing case follow-ups. On other days, his mileage could be 20 miles on an average.
See, I'm trying to figure out why it doesn't make sense to take the two squads, patrol vehicles that we have, a 57 and 66, and roll them down to a detective and your, and your assistant, the assistant police chief that has 99 and 88.
And then you didn't trade those ones off?
And then get rid, just get rid of those two old ones or, I know they're not worth anything, but if, even if they're not worth anything, we save $27,000. So they're worth $27,000 because we're not buying another car. You know, see what I'm saying?
So if you, if you want, the two squads that I'm proposing to replace, we roll those down to the detective car and?
I would replace the two, yeah, I would.
Then we wouldn't be replacing?
The detective squad.
Detective squad.
And your, your assistant police chief would have a, a car that's got less, has less miles on it than it has now. It has 99, he would go down to 57,6 or 66.
Is the detective car a marked car generally?
No, it's, it's completely unmarked. It's a blue Crown Victoria.
So we'd have to unmark it.
Hey, that sounds to me like a reasonable.
I would just like.
That way, that way, we, we update the two patrol cars. You have a squad and you have something for the deputy chief. What do you guys think of that?
So that, that is purchasing, purchasing two new cars on the state bid and just rolling those, not, not, not bidding those out for?
Not trading them.
For trading.
Because, because of Trustee Valerie's point, doing this, there, there were 27 for the detective and whatever the value of the deputy chief would be.
The only, the only cost there would be the change, the marked cars would need to have the stripes taken off and the lights. So there'd be some cost in, in stripping them out. Obviously, they don't need to have that same equipment in them because they, those cars would be.
So would we, would we like to see that those costs brought back to us next time?
Yeah, and if you could give any idea of what a trade-in would be on the two cars if we did just ballpark?
They, they would probably give me an estimate on what the trade-in would be if we traded it in today, and then I could ask them, hey, add 10,000 miles to it. Could you give me an estimate what it would be with 10,000 miles?
Yeah, I mean, we know that it's not going to be exact, but just in the area so we know what we're talking about.
I just have a question. We talked about three cars here, but then we're going to roll two down. Who's going to keep a car?
The detective is getting one of these rather than buying the detective?
No, I understand he's going to keep one of them, but right now he's talking about changing out three cars.
But the detective is one of the cars.
Okay, so one of the patrol vehicles is going to stay?
No, both patrol vehicles would be replaced.
Okay.
One, one of, one of the patrol vehicles would go to the detective squad.
Okay, all right.
The other would go to the deputy chief.
All right, okay.
And could we get, could we get a, a, a maintenance report on the two squads to make sure that all this makes sense? That, you know, I mean, I, can we have the garage give us, you know, you know, do a rundown on the automobiles and say, you know, this is, you know, this is what you, this is potentially what you're going to be looking at, this is a problem, this isn't a problem?
On the current vehicles?
On the current, on the two current control, on the two current patrol vehicles so we, so we make sure we're not keeping a problem when we actually should be getting rid of a problem.
So ask Big Riverside Garage to take them for a day?
Just do a, yeah, just do a, an assessment of the, of the cars. I mean, I think we, I think we should have an assessment on all our vehicles all the time.
And I guess there's that one that you said, because I, and I think, I mean, we're talking about the police vehicles right now, but I, I think that what you're hearing and what I think that all the departments need to hear is we need to try to maximize the life that we get out of our vehicles. Our, our vehicles are a huge cost to this village. So if there are things we can do that would also extend their life, if there are procedural things that can be done to extend their life, you know, I, I want all of the departments to be looking at that aggressively to try to get as much time as we can out of these vehicles so that we're not constantly replacing vehicles.
I agree. We just changed one procedure by assigning officers specific cars about two weeks ago. So hopefully they take a little bit.
I want to get out of the car business. I think we need to have a policy set in place for mileage, whether it be age, whether it be a dollar amount that is spent on the vehicle per maintenance, but a, a policy set in place that, that we know at this certain time we replace the vehicle so that we can try to maximize our trade-in value. I'm not saying that we drive these vehicles until the dirt's coming over the windshield, but we try to get some useful life, life out of them. We all do that with our own personal cars. You know, I, I agree with President Sells that if a vehicle that has 30,000, 50,000 miles can be passed down to someone else in the, in the department, in your department, in the fire department and be used, great. You know, I don't want officers responding in something that's unsafe, but at the same time, I'd like us to try and get close to 90 or 100,000 miles or have a policy in place that says at this mileage, we will look at this vehicle. And I don't think we have that for any of our vehicles, our trucks, our cars, or?
We have years.
We have years.
We have years, which I, I agree.
Well, the one part about this that is, is missing for me is I, I don't know what we can afford. We don't have a vehicle, at least to my knowledge, I, we don't really have a comprehensive detailed vehicle replacement plan.
That's what I'm thinking too.
So I don't know, you know, if, if, if next year a fire truck goes out and it's a hundred thousand, quarter million dollar expense, I don't know where we're at. I don't know how, how much we have to push these cars. It's just like with your household budget, you know? I drove a 98 Honda Accord a couple of extra years because I knew what I could afford and what I couldn't afford. If I had had more money, I would have replaced that car two years ago. But you limp along and you roll the dice and you hope that you don't get a $2,000 transmission replacement. But if I'd known I, how much money I, if I could have afforded a newer car earlier, I would have bought it earlier. So that's where I think we need a really good detailed, long-range vehicle replacement fund that we try to put money into every year so we know we're 60% funded on our replacements of vehicles or we're 70% or 20% or whatever.
Tonight for us, we have six vehicles, pickup truck and five cars.
Well, but we do, I mean, we do have something approaching that.
We have something approaching that. Right, but I think, and, and, and if, if we have what I'm looking for, I haven't seen it. I've, you know, a month or so ago, Peter and I corresponded back and forth and, and the finance director and there's some info, some of that, a lot of that information's out there, but I feel like we should have a, just like, you know, I use the example of the police pension fund. We know the percent. We, we have an actuarial to tell us that in 20 years, here's how much this expense is going to be. And we know how much we need to put into that fund every year. And we know we're 70% funded or 80% or whatever it is. And I think all of our capital, especially vehicle and equipment, should be in the same type of plan so we know where we're at and we know if we have to roll the dice and try to get another year out of these cars or if it's more prudent to say, go ahead and replace it because I don't want to get stuck with that $2,000 transmission replacement.
You know, and to, to that point, I'd like to see the information on what the trade-in value, if you're proposing two vehicles at this moment, and I know things change on a day-to-day basis, but what is the current value that we're talking about replacing? What is it worth to us? So.
I, I do, I would like to, to point out that even we don't, even though some might feel that we just look at a, a year and that's when we come up with the idea, we do, staff does review all vehicles that are included in this plan on a year-to-year basis. So the vehicles that we do propose for replacement within a given year, that's staff's estimate on when the useful life of that vehicle is up. So, but we can look at, at some of the things that, that you are suggesting.
Yeah, because I think that really does go to Trustee Pollack's point. You're talking about more of a predictive model.
Yeah, well, it's something that gives us an idea of what we can afford.
So why don't you, do you want to revisit this with the village manager and our finance director?
Sure.
Okay, anything else with regard to the capital expenses? Let's move this forward some here.
You know, I, I just, my question is, we're, we're, we're looking at purchasing a van for the, for the recreation department, which I think is very justified considering the, the proposal that Director Melchiori has, has presented with us on the return that we will get for the day camps and the kinder care and all the different things. One of the things that worries me about this purchase is where are we going to put it? You know, we're, 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 we're no longer parking things in the garage back here because it's, because it's about ready to fall in on the car. We're dismantling Northgate and we have no, where are we going to, I'd like to know where we're going to put this or can we do some sort of inventory of our, of our parking spaces, whether it be at the Northgate or Public Works or in the, in the old youth center? I just think if we're going to, you know, invest in a, in a, in this vehicle, we should do, you know, we should, we should have a place to put it. And that's the only thing that worries me. I mean, I, I, okay, that's what I would like to. We got, we got, we got stuff kind of spotted all over the place. We have antique.
Okay, we'll have that for you at the next meeting. Okay, let's go to the expenditures by department now, beginning on page 13. The village manager, are there any questions about any of the expenditures listed here? The only thing that I had is on page 16. There's a notation under postage and delivery for CMAP mailings. And my understanding is that that was, that isn't really applicable. Correct? Any other items that any trustees have? Now, let's move on to finance.
Refer to page 13 if I can find page 13.
Finance is on page 19.
Look on the, yeah, on the.
Oh, I see. I'm looking the wrong page number. Got it.
Because these are all, these were all put together separately then collated by our finance director. Next is police and I have two, two items, beginning on page 23, on page 23 and page 24. And I don't know if this is a question for the chief or for our village manager. At, toward the bottom of page 23, there's an equipment replacement amount for $4,300 that says it's replacement of office equipment, printers, CPU, small furniture, squad equipment as needed or mandated. And then there's a, there's a duplicate description on page 24 for an amount of $5,500. And I was curious whether those are, if one of those doesn't belong, if those are cumulative?
No, I did look into that. They are actually, they are separate divisions. One is, falls under the police administration and the other one is, is, falls under investigations. So each division has its own line item for equipment replacement.
Did you want to comment to that or?
Yeah, they're just, the, the investigation, detective used different equipment, so the, the managers write about them. So it's just, just where the money is put in the different units.
Okay. Anything else on the police? Moving to fire on page 29. I just, I just wanted to ask Chief Comer if you could, and this is, this, this is not to question the expense, but I just thought that maybe you could describe it for us since it's quite a large amount. On page 30, there's a $45,000 amount for eight sets of turnout gear replacement. Could you just describe for us and the folks watching what, what that is for?
Yeah, per NPA standards, standard structural firefighting gear has to be replaced every eight years, eight years. And so this is a rotating basis that we replace gear. So it has an eight, eight-year lifecycle for.
So, it has an eight, eight-year lifecycle for structural firefighting gear.
Any questions about that? Okay, thank you, Chief. There's nothing else with regard to fire, moving to public works, page 33. I only had one question and then this, this is really just more for informational purposes for our village manager to talk about. And that is toward the top of the page, there's a $40,000 expenditure for entire village phones. And if you could just describe that?
That is, the village is going to be moving to a V, avoid phone system. And what that will allow us to do is to improve phone reliability as, as also providing features that will make it easier for people to be notified when they receive messages. So, it hopefully will improve callback time as well as the phone system that we currently have. We are starting, we are beginning to experience frequent reliability issues with the equipment and the cost of having the technician come out far exceeds the, the cost of, of having the new piece of equipment in place as well as the, the new phone system will have a better maintenance agreement, which will hopefully keep maintenance costs down in the future.
And one, what I would like to add to this system that Director Francis described to me the other day is you'll be much more likely to get a human being when you call our village offices than, than the recording that you too often get now. Anything else with regard to public works?
And I, I did want to, just, there was one item on here. It's a $30,000 expenditure for under supplies, under utilities on page 33. That is just so that, for the benefit of those who may be following at home or the board here, that is the cost that we pay for the lampposts. Because that does not fall under free service under the franchise agreements.
And is it still the case that there's only one place that makes those?
No, no, this is the actual cost to operate, the electrical cost and the gas cost for the...
Oh, got you. Okay, got it. Okay. All righty. Anything else under public works? Page 37, motor fuel. Page 38, recreation. Page 41, E911. And then the capital projects we've already, we've already discussed. So, with that overview, are there, are there any other questions that we have for Director Francis or any of the department heads who are here? Again, thank you to our staff for the hard work that you've done putting this together in such a fine, fine form and for providing the information that we need to make these, these difficult decisions. We really appreciate it. Thank you. So, we will come back and have another chance to look at this at our, our next couple meetings. So, if anything comes up between now and then, we always have another chance to talk about it. There any new business for this evening? We do have an executive session this evening to, for discussion of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and also to discuss collective negotiating matters. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to reconvene.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Foley, second by Ms. Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Mr. Comer.
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Valerie?
Aye.
Mr. Comer?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.